Welcome to the Henry County Commissioners Meeting of October 27th. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short prayer?
Welcome to the Henry County Commissioners Meeting of October 27th. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short prayer?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us during this meeting and that we would conduct this meeting within your will. We ask you to be with our country and our county. In Jesus' name, amen. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the Commissioners reviewed the payroll?
Make a motion to accept payroll.
Second. Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the Commissioners reviewed the claims?
I'll make a motion to accept the claims as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept claims passes three zero. Mr. Murphy will not be here, so we will not have an EDC update this week. Moving on to agreements, the first agreement we have is a Garner Street easement agreement. Commissioner Dullinger, do you have anything to say about that one?
I believe, after talking to veteran, we're still in the decision on whether or not how Mr. Cogter wants to be paid for his property. It all has to be done during the summer months, so the only thing that needs to be finalized is get with him to see how he wants to be paid. But other than that, the easement was tabled several months ago, and after talking to him, we agreed to go ahead and let him proceed with it. So I'll make a motion that we pass this agreement.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the agreement with veteran on the easement passes three zero. We have one other agreement that was added late in the day. It is an agreement we talked about in the past. It's an interlocal agreement between Henry County and Randolph County to share the services of our highway superintendent and engineer, Joe Copeland. We passed a version of it that had some blank spaces in it at our last meeting, and is there any discussion prior to taking another look at this?
Joe, did you get a chance to go over this, and do you have any?
I did. I mean, it's consistent with what's been described, that Mr. Copeland worked approximately twelve hours with Henry County and Randolph County performing specific tasks in the listing agreement. He'll be paid originally, and all benefits that come through Henry County and Randolph County, we reverse every county for what happened, those costs on a monthly basis.
Did you see anything?
I did. I covered all of those things, and I'm going to check up.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this agreement with Randolph County?
I'll make motion to accept it.
I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one to accept the interlocal agreement with Randolph County.
It's my understanding the council has to pass the entire agreement as well.
They'll have to approve the agreement, and then also adopt a salary limit for the new salary that Mr. Cogter debated, once he becomes effective.
All right, thank you.
Okay. We have received the weights and measures report. Do I have a motion to accept the weights and measures report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Weights and measures report is accepted by vote of three zero. We have a quote from Henry County Glass and Mirror to replace a window in the veteran's office. And because it is leaking around the window, causing damage inside the building, the quote that we have from Henry County Glass and Mirror is for $288.06.
I'll make a motion to accept this quote, so that they can move forward in replacing the window.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Next item is a quote from SJCA Engineering Firm for the Bell Tower Solar Asset Management Project. And what this is, is we have a solar project going in in the southern part of the county. The planning board passed it over a year ago. We are just now getting, finalizing the agreements between the county and the solar company. The county is responsible for coming up with the road usage agreement and road repairs, if there are any damages while they put this project in. And this quote is from an engineering firm, and it is for $48,928.08. And what they do for this is they take video and pictures of the road, all during the construction process of this solar farm, and then report any damages to the solar company. And they are responsible for repairing the roads, putting them back in the same condition they were before they started the project. And they are also responsible for paying this SJCA for this service. So this is at no cost to the county. And the company, Bellflower Solar, estimated the cost of these engineering services at approximately $150.00 an hour. They at least made that allowance in our agreement, and it came in at $76.56.00 an hour, so almost half the cost that they allowed for this service. Is there any questions or discussion about whether we should accept this contract or not?
Joe, did you have a chance to look this over?
They had sent out a proposal before, preliminarily, for a six-month project, and I believe that's for the one-year project. They come back, because they thought it was only going to be a six-month construction period, but Bellflower says that it's going to be clear into one year. So they changed their, it was forty-two something, now it's forty-eight something. So if that's a one-year, that is the correct proposal, yes.
And you're okay with what they're proposing to do for SJCA?
Yes, I'm familiar with their inspection. When I was in Madison, they did inspection of subdivisions, and they've got a fellow on staff that's used to be a state employee, and he's very good at it.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
I'll make a motion to accept this proposal from SJCA as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next item is the planning commission has forwarded to us for approval, Case B 2248, from Don Shaw, to rezone from agricultural A1 to general business, a portion of ground outside the town of Sulphur Springs for the purpose of putting in a new business. It passed through the planning commission. Is there any further discussion by the Commissioners?
Yeah, is there anybody here to speak?
Come on up.
My name's Teresa Huckabee. Last, the other day when I was up here, I got cut off, but I was kind of go over my points here real quick. Like I said, my name's Teresa Huckabee, and I've lived cat or corner from the Six Acre site for about thirty years. For over thirty years, major flooding has impacted my property and the lives of myself, my family, and my neighbors. Major floods like the one in the RTV6 news video coverage I have with me today have been happening at least twice a year for over thirty years. In the last three years alone, my yard and barn have suffered damage from at least ten major floods, like the one in the news coverage and the other videos I have with me today. I spoke at the planning commission meeting on October 21st. I voiced at least a few of my concerns, including how not even a retention pond would solve the water problem coming from the Six Acre site. I watched the meeting online, and at fifty-two minutes and fifty seconds, one planning commissioner whispered to the person beside him, quote, "It's a location issue. They're never going to fix that problem." The person sitting beside him immediately agreed with the whispered quote, "Yeah." I agree with those whispered words. And I'm here to ask the board to deny the rezoning for development that would cause further water hardships to myself, my family, and my neighbors. And I have videos that I can show water coming off of that field. I mean, there's a real drainage problem there. And that's, I just finished up what I didn't get said the other day, and I could go on and on and on, but there is definitely an issue with drainage there, and it's been there for over thirty years. And I showed the video, the RTV video. Would you like to see that?
Thank you.
Would you like to see that video? Or they done a video where I mean, told about the water run spilling over State Road 36?
Did you guys see the video when you heard the case?
It is a winning game for the people who live here in Sulphur Springs and north central Henry County because of this. Water from a flooded field has spilled over into yards. Some people can't even get up to their homes. Others say it's around the foundation. The emergency management officials are here on the scene. They're assessing the situation. The people who live here say at this point, they may not even be able to go into their home until later on tonight.
Not today, not for several hours. I'll have to wait. The driveway has washed out before, and I'll have to make sure there's a driveway there before I can get to my house.
I'll just have to wait and see and dry it out. That's all I can do. But it's just kind of irritating to think you have a nice place like this, and all this water does the damage to it, but can't do much about it.
Emergency management officials say things do look a little bit better. At one point, the water was actually spilling over Highway 36. It is now receded. From Henry County, Julie Burceley, RTV6.
I mean, I got videos of the water coming directly out of that field. I mean, down Thirty-Six and from the field, right, I mean, the storage bins, the storage bins never even had, the storage bins, the water, all that, whenever they built them, I think I was told by my husband that they should have had a retention pond behind that, but they didn't, and they run all that water down into the ditch between the six acres he's wanting rezoned. I mean, just a small spot there where that runs in there, and then off the field, and it all comes underneath the road onto me and my neighbors. There's three houses there, and I was the only one notified of this rezoning. And I think the other two, the one, I mean, they had to tear their carpets, everything. That water went down around his house and went in his house. And they said that, last meeting the other day, that they thought the railroad served as a dam. The railroad don't serve as no dam there. The water can get away, it just, so much of it, it's just, and all the ground, you know, erosion and stuff. So that's my main concern, and I'm not saying anything, but, I mean, I don't want his water. I mean, I'm already getting it, and I don't want no more. And he's starting with the six acres, but it's a sixty-acre, it's sixty point something acres of ground there that he had annexed. And so again, my name's Teresa Huckabee. I live right cat or corner from it, so.
I appreciate your comments.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks, thank you for not cutting me off, and thanks for listening to me.
I hope, you know, that's why we have a planning board. There are nine people on it. I hope they took a good look at it. I hope there's something during the construction phase that can help the water, but those nine people passed it. That's my neighborhood. That's where I live, right outside of Sulphur Springs, right along that railroad track, by the way, but.
Well, I've been there for thirty, over thirty years too, and so that's my home, and I don't want it destroyed by that water.
I'm hoping that when they actually build the new business out there, that they can do something to help alleviate some of that water. There isn't very many times that water goes over State Road 36. But there are places all over the county, when we get a big enough rain, we have serious problems all over the place. Any questions from the other Commissioners?
Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this project?
Steve, would you address, is there an issue there that county needs to look at?
We want to protect her property and do what we can to do that. That's why we have a drainage board, that actually any business that comes into Henry County has to do a site plan and drain calculations for their site before anything can be done. The planning commission can approve it, you can approve it, but it has to go through the drainage board as that. I've been on her property, fixed blowholes. Let's go back about a hundred years, when these tiles were first put in. If we could go back and do what we should have done back then, you know, hindsight's better than, we just would have not built houses within the seventy-five-foot easement. If you look at the first big picture you've got there, there's a hundred and twenty-two acres of drainage. If you notice, it's on the north side of Thirty-Six and the south side of Thirty-Six. It goes clear back up to Roberts' property there. All that land drains down through there. If you look at that, there's one there, it's got the tile in it. We have a twenty-inch tile.
Is that the blue line?
That's the blue line. That's the twenty-inch tile that goes right in front of their house and right in back of those other two houses. We're in a, it's a no-catch situation here. Mother Nature has a lot to do with this. This is the worst month in the record. We'll be up in the five top of the history after Thursday and Friday. If we get the rains we're getting, the wettest years. We all got to agree, we're not going for a hundred-year storms anymore, we're going for five-hundred-year storms. If you watch the news, it's everywhere, flooding, in towns, never had it before, I mean, downtown places. We can't handle the water. That's why drainage is so critical in this county, and it's not looked at, is what it should be. That's why, that's why we want to put our money where the drainage is. So if you look at that, she's right. We want to protect her as much as we can. So that's why I explained to Mrs. Kennett, I had that chance to talk to you, but that has to go through the engineer of the county to look at those site plans and drain calculations. If they don't meet the storm water ordinance, so that, you know, what we're doing, he's going to tell them. They'll have to do something to retain that water. That's the big thing. They'll have to retain that water, Joe, if I'm right. They cannot release any water. It's the same as twenty-four hours, they have to hold and retain their water and not let it go any worse than what it would, is that they've got buildings or not got buildings, and what it's doing right now. What's going underneath the state, I can't control that. If they put a pipe underneath there, that's the state. This stuff's been going on before I was in here nine years ago. So, you know, it has been a problem down there. It's in a bowl right there. That is the end of all the water that comes down there, ends up right there to go underneath those railroad tracks, and it gets into the open ditch. So she's absorbing all water. If you take all the roads out and everything, that watershed right there is where the water's going to run no matter what. It follows those tiles. Those were put in a hundred years ago. Can't change it. All we can do is adapt to it and try to correct and help do the, you know, correct the situation. So if anybody's got questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If Joe can say anything on that, that's fine.
Is it a tile size problem now? Is that what we're facing?
You're looking at two different situations. You're looking at subsurface water with the tile, but what we're dealing with with her is surface water. That means time-concentrated. That means if it rains three inches in an hour, we can't control it. Mother Nature controls that. That's why you call flooding. You can't control it. We can control the subsurface water with the size of tile, but the bottom line is, I hate to say it, but I hate seeing tiles running that close to houses. I just grin, you know, scringe when you see that. It just, it creates problems. And it shouldn't happen, but it's not her problem. It wasn't her, you know, she didn't do anything wrong. It's just it happened. Now we look at that. We keep everybody away from those seventy-five-foot easements because of this situation right here. So, but we'll do everything we can to look at this and go over it. You're more than welcome to come to the drainage board meeting. When we look at this, when I get the drain calculations and the site plans, we'll go over it. Mr. Copeland will examine them and go through them, and if there's something wrong, we will absolutely make that company do what's right to protect what the flooding, no worse. We can't make it any, you know, much better because Mother Nature does what they do, but we can do what we can do to keep it from coming over there any faster.
I guess that's all we can ask, is that this project doesn't make things worse.
Right.
And apparently, in the estimation of the planning commission, it would not make things worse. If it rains a lot, obviously you're going to have a problem.
Yeah.
And there may even be a way, once you guys take a look at it, to make it better.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any more discussion on this? Do I have a motion to accept the opinion of the Henry County Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Now ready for department reports. Angela, do you have anything? I think Joe has something, right?
Debbie does too.
Did I skip her?
I just have two items this evening. I just have two items this evening. First, we'll go over, it's annual bids time again, and I'm working on specifications, and I put together a list of items that I'd like to put on the annual bid, and I got those out kind of late today because I didn't get an answer from one of the contractors, so I'll pass this out so you can see it. Any more discussion on this? Do I have a motion to accept the opinion of the Henry County Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Now ready for department reports. Angela, do you have anything? I think Joe has something, right?
Debbie does too.
Did I skip her?
I just have two items this evening. I, I just have two items this evening. First, we'll go over, it's annual bids time again, and I'm working on specifications. And I put together a list of, of items that I'd like to put on the annual bid. And I got those out kind of late today because I didn't get an answer from one of the contractors. So I'll pass this out so you can see it. The items shown are the same as last year, except that we have two. One that's not carrying their bid over because it's changing drastically, and that was liquid asphalt. And the other, and two others that, that will carry their bid over. Now, if they carry their bid over, they have to ensure that they, the price is the same throughout the entire year as it was 2021 for 2022. So they cannot change their price. So that's calcium chloride and large equipment rental and labor. There was one contractor, he's supposed to get with me tomorrow about small equipment rental and labor. So that's the only one. If, if he doesn't carry his price over, I'll put it on the bid list for the items to bid. Another item is the date. I'd like to open them on December 15th here on a Wednesday. I got to check the availability of the courtroom. Open them then and then have them ready then a week later on December 22nd at your regular meeting. So we can, you can approve them. I'll make recommendations and we can move forward and have them ready by the 1st of January. If that's okay.
What time would you?
I think the last one on the 15th was 3 o'clock.
I'm good.
Is the room available? Do we know that?
I contacted Ann, but she wasn't in today. 15th?
It's a Wednesday.
December 15th. Oh, okay. Usually Ann, I'd contacted Ann before and she told me, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we can go with that pending that the room is available.
She's looking right now, just, she's looking right now.
Okay.
And then this will be advertised in November, so.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. So we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, great. If that's okay, I'll proceed and get specifications ready and, and get the advertisement out so we can get moving. The second item is federal aid application. There's a call for federal aid funds, or federal aid projects, I should say, starting next month. And we've, we currently have two federal aid jobs, and, and they put them together in one bid. And what it is, is it's a sign replacement project. One's the eastern part of the county and the other one's the central part of the county. It was bid and let in September. And we should be starting here shortly. I haven't got a pre-construction notice yet. But we've taken care of the central and eastern. What about the western? So I thought I would put an application in to take care of the western part of the county so we can complete the entire county. And these are for regulatory and warning signs only, not for road name signs. So it's, it's a big help. Those signs are expensive. I think the project was between $500,000 and $600,000 was the bid to replace the central and eastern. And they'll be working on that, should be throughout the winter. They should get a lot of work done. It'd be good work for contractor, for his people. So if it's okay, I would like to, if it's with your approval, submit that application then next month so we can get going. Try to get the money. Now that's paid 90-10. We get, we only have to pay 10% of that. And I'm going to ask for the design and the construction to be 10% and the construction inspection, all of it. Because it's, it's, it's traffic safety money. It's what they call HSIP funds with the state. That's okay, I'll proceed.
I'll make a motion to allow you to proceed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. One other update. Our community crossings matching grant funding resurface project will begin next Monday. They're going to start working on birmingham the roads and getting them prepared, doing some milling to get ready to resurface these roads, so.
Dublin Pike?
Yes. Dublin, it'll be done from the city limits down to 500 East. As the curve goes around 500 East, the south end of that curve is where they will end. And then next year, I want to put in to do the remainder of Dublin Pike down to meet Wilbur Wright down there at Stop Sign for next year. So, yeah, that, so you, you can look for that coming, so. Now, I was asked if they could close roads. And he'll have to close 325 West because it's too narrow for his people to pave and to allow traffic through. He's going to try Dublin Pike and Raider Road to pave it with open to traffic. But I told him, I said, if you have a real problem with traffic going too fast by your personnel, I said, you close the road. I don't want anyone hurt. So if you see road close signs up, that's why. They're just, they can't control it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Steve, you have anything? Sheriff's Department? Debbie?
So, um, we need, uh, we need to have you guys set dates for the art committee. The art committee that's made up of the three commissioners, two councilmen, myself, and the treasurer of the church. We want those meetings set the second and fourth Wednesday of every month at 2:00 until probably through 2024. I don't know. I mean, for a while, I don't know how long we're going to do it. But we need to come up, because we have to come up with a plan now to be able to pay some of the fees that we want to pay out of there.
Is, can we get away with one advertisement and just say that that's a standard meeting once we announce it? That, that would save us a lot of advertising.
Yeah, that's why I asked if we could do that, so we could just have them set indefinitely for the second and fourth Wednesday at 2:00.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept that proposal?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Any other department heads here that have a report? Okay, we'll move on to new business. First thing under new business is we have, over the last month and a half or so, been working on with the Health Department, Henry County's COVID-19 Response Safety Plan. It has been looked at by the Health Department and the commissioners and revised a few times. It is primarily, I believe, for obviously safety of the county, but primarily for safety of county workers, as in there are things about what you are to do if you are not feeling well, what the procedure is. And we think we have come up with a pretty good plan. Are there any questions from the public about it? Or do the commissioners have anything to discuss about the plan?
Angela, do you have any? You reviewed it?
Yes, I reviewed it. So it's up to me with the most current CDC recommendation. And just to clarify, this is for Henry County COVID-19 system. And so what OSHA and CDC have asked, and all systems have asked, they've, they've been, they've been, they've been, it's not, it's not publicly perceived that it's here for hours.
Right, primarily for county employees.
I make a motion to accept the COVID-19 Response Safety Plan as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Next item is voter registration. Has been looking over redistricting plans for Henry County. Based on the latest census, I don't believe as far as the county commissioners go that anything has changed. There may be some changes. I don't think they're substantial for the Henry County Council, but do we have ordinance numbers for these things?
Um, ordinance number for the commissioners? It's 2021-8-10-27. And the council is 2021-7-10-27.
Thank you, Debbie. Any discussion on these two ordinances? Well, they're not too long, as I can read them. This is ordinance 2021-8-10-27, and ordinance establishing county commissioners districts in Henry County, Indiana, whereas Indiana Code 36-2-2-4 provides that the county executive shall by ordinance divide the county into three districts that are composed of contiguous territory and are reasonably compact. The district boundaries drawn by the executive must not cross precinct boundary lines and must divide townships only when a division is clearly necessary to accomplish redistricting under this section. Whereas if the county executive or county redistricting commission determines that a division under subsection C is not required, the county executive or county redistricting commission shall adopt an ordinance recertifying that the districts as drawn comply with this section. Whereas no such redistricting is required to be made in the year 2021. Now therefore be it ordained, election districts for Henry County Commissioners are recertified without modification to the districts.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2021-8-10-27.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance is adopted. This is ordinance 2021-7-10-27. Ordinance establishing county council districts in Henry County, Indiana, whereas Indiana Code 36-2-3-4 provides that the county executive shall by ordinance divide the county into four contiguous single-member county council districts that are compact, subject only to natural boundary lines, that do not cross precinct boundary lines, that contain as nearly as possible equal population, and that include whole townships except where otherwise clearly necessary. And whereas such division is required to be made in the year 2021 and every 10 years thereafter. Now therefore be it ordained, election districts for Henry County Council seats are described as follows. District 1 includes Henry Township precincts 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19, and 20, and all Spice Land Township. District 2 includes Henry Township precincts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 12, and 17. District 3 includes all precincts in the following townships, Fall Creek, Greensboro, Harrison, and Wayne. And District 4 includes all precincts in the following township, Blue River, Dudley, Franklin, Jefferson, Liberty, Prairie, and Stony Creek. I have a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. We have a seat on the park board, which will be open after the 1st of the year. It is open to any Republican or Democrat in the county or independent. Anyone can apply for that seat. I believe we will advertise that seat on the county's webpage. If you are interested, or you know someone that might be interested in serving on the park board, they can apply anytime between now and the 1st of the year. Henry County Extension Office, actually it's the Purdue Extension Office of Henry County, is asking to be closed certain dates. It's a short letter, so I'll just read it. Dear Henry County Commissioners, on behalf of Purdue Henry County Extension Office, we would like to notify you of the closure of our offices on the following dates to comply with Purdue University's holiday schedule. Our two secretaries are willing to take comp time off for these four days. We wish to close the office from Wednesday, November 24th through Friday, November 26th for Thanksgiving, and from Thursday, December 23rd through Monday, January 3rd, 2022. We hope this meets with your approval. Please feel free to contact me, Kelsey Myers. Any discussion? I have a motion to accept. Don't need a motion. We just wish them happy holidays then. We have a letter here from Franklin Township Assistance Guidelines. From Franklin Township. According to the State Port of Accounts, I should send to you for your records my township assistance guidelines on a yearly basis. You will find the attached guidelines for 2021 and 22. If you have any questions, feel free to call. Deborah Barnes, Franklin Township Trustee.
I make a motion to accept the Franklin Township Assistance Guidelines as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. We have a request to paint a bicentennial mural on the Hope Building. There's a mural, probably everyone has had a chance to see it. It was painted by students about six years ago. It is on the, what is that? That would be the east side of the Hope Building. And they are now about six years old. Most of them still look pretty good. But the bicentennial only comes around every 200 years. So there is a group that would like to paint a new mural on the wall of the Hope Building. Is there any discussion?
Do we know what the mural is going to be? I'm sorry.
I don't believe the sketch for the mural is complete, but the idea that I heard was it would have some sort of roadway, and it would depict several of the cars that were manufactured here in Henry County, including the Maxwell Cars and some of the Chrysler Cars. And I'm sure that will be available for review. They're just asking our permission to actually work on that building, which it is the county's building. However, where they have to stand when they work is not county property, and they will have to get permission from the owner of that property, which they, I believe, have already done. But to answer your question, there is nothing you can look at at this time.
I'll make a motion to allow this process to go forward on the condition that we get a review of what they're going to do before final approval.
I'll second that, because I'd like to see what we're approving before we allow them to paint it.
Okay, so the motion is that we will allow the bicentennial mural painters to repaint that side of the building, subject to county commissioner approval of their sketch. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. We have several bonds. Bonding of Amy Miller, an amount of $100,000 by the Western Surety Company. Bonding of Kimberly Laird by Western Surety Company, an amount of $25,000. She's from the South Henry. She's deputy treasurer of South Henry School Corporation. Amy Miller says is the treasurer for the South Henry School Corporation. We have another bond for Lisa McConnell from the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company for $50,000. She is the high school treasurer for South Henry School Corporation. Another one for Renee L. Creach from Ohio Casualty Insurance Company for $25,000. She is the latchkey director for South Henry School Corporation. One for Julie Bowman from the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company for $25,000. She is an elementary treasurer for South Henry School Corporation.
Make a motion to accept the bonds as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bonds are accepted. 3-0. Bear with me a second. I'm trying to figure out what this is. Franklin Township Assistance Income Guide. Okay. We had a email and a phone call for a street closure in Blackberry Woods. I believe Commissioner Dellinger took that phone call. Would you explain what this is for?
They're wanting a holiday block party, so to speak, and it's a dead-end street, and they just want to slow traffic down and stop traffic for kids going door-to-door trick-or-treating in that neighborhood, and they're going to have a food truck and things in there. I talked to highway engineer about it. We don't seem to have an issue with it being closed for roughly three hours on Friday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Any other business commissioners have? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or ask a question? This is their time.
First of all.
Would you identify yourself with that mask?
Oh.
It's hard to... Oh, I do know you.
Yeah. So, first of all, it's been 1,137 days since they started tearing out equipment at the Expo Center. 794 days since they started building. There's not enough funds there, and you guys want to tax the community to pay for something that was promised wouldn't be a problem for us. Am I correct so far?
No, I don't think you are correct.
Okay.
No one that I know of has proposed that any tax.
Food and beverage tax?
The food and beverage tax is already in place.
It was set to expire, correct?
I don't believe so. It's been renewed.
It was renewed.
We have payments to make. We cannot expire or let it expire because we have payments to make from food and beverage tax money. Right now, funds are obligated, I believe, up to year 2035 before we pay off.
As far as the beverage tax, food and beverage taxes for the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame, they had three extensions, which at that time, that food and beverage tax should have expired. So why are we committing more taxpayer money to pay for everybody else's problems? That Expo Center is not the public's problem.
As far as I know, not one dime of food and beverage money has been given to the.
I didn't say it has been given, but it's been proposed. You and I talked about this in April, and you said that you agree it should be done.
I do not get a vote on that. I don't have any influence there. There is a committee of nine people that are taking proposals.
But you proposed it as well. You agreed with it.
I think it's a good thing, but I didn't propose anything.
But the taxpayer should pay for Kim Cronk and Kathy Hamilton's mistake, correct?
Excuse me?
That big old hole out there that's still, you know, like I said, 794 days into.
It's not up to me, and it's not up to these commissioners.
But you guys will have to agree on it when it comes.
No, we don't.
No, you don't?
With food and beverage money, commissioners have no say with food and beverage money.
Well, that's good to know. But it was an idea that should be, and I'll take it up to the council tomorrow night. But this is something that should not even be mentioned. It's our money. I mean, you guys are like rhinos, Republicans named only, because you like to spend our money without coming back and asking the people first what they think.
What money have we spent that you disagree with?
We can go back to the one approximately $1 million that was given to the Expo. Or how about this?
No one sitting here gave their approval to any of that money.
The county had nothing to do with it.
The county had something to do with it, but no one sitting here had anything to do.
Sitting here, we can go back and blame the former commissioners.
Not blaming anyone. I thought it was a good idea.
Oh, no, you told me that they should have had the money paid for. You told me that the money should have been there in the first place before they started building.
My opinion is just my opinion. It doesn't really matter for anything.
As a commissioner, that's what you told me. So now it's a good idea?
I'm sorry. I don't understand your point here.
Second of all. I mean, it's time for you to resign. I know. You've heard it from everybody. But it is. I mean, this is nothing new, the way you guys do a little backdoor deals. And let's take Ed to example. Remember when the little quid pro quo meeting happened with the park board when you were liaison to, let's see here, buy a mower for a vote to open the, I mean, for everyone to sign off on the Veterans Museum?
I'm sorry, but, you know, we've allowed you to speak. That is actually false.
If I pull up two people that could say that it's true, and the agreement was $5,000 to purchase a monument, if they would vote to sign off on the lease.
That agreement was never made. I don't know.
Well, seriously.
I have heard that someone accused that of happening, but that did not happen. There was no reason for it to happen, and I'd be glad to talk to you further offline. But I believe you only really get three minutes here. If you have something that's substantial that you would like to.
Here's my last comment.
Present?
Let's go commissioners. Let's go Brandon.
Does anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.